Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. And thank you for coming out for tonight's ceremony. The swearing in of our council for 2013 to 2017. It's going to be the exact four years. When you think of the fact that less than half the rural's population has the right to select their own government vote, we're pretty lucky. So that's what we're here for tonight, is to swear in our council. And before we do, the first thing that we're going to do is do the "Ode to Newfoundland" and I'd like to have Jolene Felton come up and sing "The Ode to Newfoundland" for us. So if you can all rise.
When sunrises round the pine glade hills, and summer spreads her hair. When silver voices tune the hills, we love thee, smiling land. We love thee, we love thee, we love thee, smiling land.
Thank you, Jolene, that was a great job. She only earned it desperately. She gets her talent from her mother. If at some point during the night you'll hear somebody say, "Order please," it'll probably be our next speaker. Bringing remarks from the province of Newfoundland and Labrador, we have the MHA for Trinity North and the Speaker of the House, ladies and gentlemen, Ross Weis.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you for the invitation to be a part of this very special ceremony as we see the swearing in of a brand-new council for Town of Clarendon. Before I make some comments to the incoming council, I want to take this opportunity, on behalf of, I'll take the liberty of speaking on behalf of all of you and all of the residents of Clarendon, to take this opportunity to thank the outgoing mayor, Fred Best. Fred has been an outstanding citizen of Clarendon, who's made a major contribution to the development of this town. And a lot of the things that we experience in Clarendon today is, a lot of this has happened during Fred's tenure either as a councillor or as the mayor of this town. So Fred, on behalf of all of the residents of Clarendon, thank you for the great work that you've done on behalf of all of us. And to Louise, who's here with him tonight as well, one of the things, and this is a comment for the councillors coming in, this is a partnership. Because if you think that you couldn't be successful and stay on council for as long as Fred has without having the full support of your family, you're sadly mistaken. And so Louise, thank you for your great contribution and the support you've provided to Fred and there for him as he's delivered and contributed to the growth of this town. So thank you very much on behalf of all of us. And to those who are here, the outgoing councillors, thank you for your contribution and dedication to the growth of this town. And to those of you who are here who are candidates in this past election, congratulations for recognizing the importance of your contribution to the democratic process and for making the commitment to be a candidate. And it's because it's not an easy task campaigning, as some of you have found. And to the council itself, congratulations to each and every one of you on your election. The next four years, you'll find to be a very challenging one, and you're a part of a great community, and that's something that you already don't know. And one of the things that I take great pride in, in my travels throughout the province particularly, when I talk about Clarendon, and people raise Clarendon, comments I just drove through last week, first of all, I've been there for a number of years, and they're astonished about the growth and the changes that they've seen in the town. So Clarendon is one of the most happening towns in the entire province, and we're well positioned for that continued growth and success that we've had in the past years. So to you as incoming councillors, the burden is heavy, a lot to live up to, and you've got to continue with the momentum, provide the leadership so that we can continue the momentum that we've had in the last number of years. You're taking the reins of a town that has tremendous potential, great opportunities ahead of us, and your leadership and your commitment will continue to experience the success we've had in recent years. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and I look forward, as your MHA, to continue to work with you. I've had some real great experiences in the 14 years that I've been around and working with council, and together we've, I think, achieved a lot for this region, and I look forward to working with you. And my commitment to you is to continue to do what I've done in the past, to work with councils, to make sure that anything that we can do is a promise, to add to your success and make your job a lot easier, that commitment is there. So congratulations, look forward to working with you.
Before we move on any further, I'd just like to bring regrets from Jill Monk. Jill, as you all know, got elected to council as well, and she couldn't be here tonight, she's in St. John's for some medical treatment, and we wish her the best, and we know that she'll be back as soon as she can, and she'll be sitting around in the council chamber with the rest of these people here, so we wish her the best. And now, for the reason that we're all here tonight, Mayor Best is going to swear in the new councillors, and it's an honour for me and a great sadness to be able to call Fred Best the mayor for the last official time. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Fred Best.
Thank you, Bob, ladies and gentlemen. First person to be sworn in is, we take these in alphabetical order, first person to take the hold of office is Ashling Avery. After I read your bio, Ashling, I would like for you to come to the stage. Ashling was raised in Clarendon, and apart from periods away from education, she has lived here all her life. After graduating from Clarendon High School, Ashling went to the Moncton Flights College in New Brunswick in 1998, where she earned her pilot's licence and a college diploma in aviation technology. She then taught aviation students in Moncton for several years and then flew small twin-engine planes out of Alphats. Ashling returned to Newfoundland in 2005, when she attended Sir Wilford Grenfell College in Hornibrook and then finished the Bachelor of Science Pharmacy degree at Memorial University in St. John's. She was the recipient of several university scholarships and bursaries, including the Drugstore Pharmacy Dominion Scholarship, the J. Joseph Dix Memorial Bursary and Pharmacy for Students Who Overcame Challenges to Achieve Success, the SANTA Club Scholarship, and the Natural Medicines Comprehensive Database Award, which is given to an outstanding graduating pharmacy student. In 2010, Ashling returned to Clarendon, where she now works as a community pharmacist. Ashling regularly supports charities such as the Clarendon Area SPCA, Clarendon Crime Stuffers, and the Heart of the Stroke Foundation. She has done volunteer work with the Clarendon Events Centre and has volunteered with the Red Cross in Moncton following the events of 9/11. Ashling has also donated her time to contribute to the education of pharmacy students by serving as a procepto. Together with her husband Sheldon, they enjoy going to their cabin, travelling, and voting. Ladies and gentlemen, Ashling Avery.
Ashling, I would like for you to read this.
I, Ashling Avery, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Clarendon to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct or indirect monetary interest that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ashling Avery. Second person to take the hold of office is councillor Bill Bailey. Bill was born and raised in Sholabber and has lived in the town of Clarendon for more than 60 years. He is married to Gina Bailey and has one daughter, Michelle. Bill attended high school at Orwood High and vocational school at Kona, Irin, Clarendon. He is a certified Level 4 Claims Adjuster and has almost 40 years of experience in that field, including extensive contract adjusting with EMOs in Newfoundland, Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, and Alberta, completing catastrophe claims. He has owned and operated an adjusting business in Clarendon for over 25 years. Bill is an extremely active member of the Clarendon community, both personally and professionally. He is a retired member of the Clarendon Fire Department, a previous Vista School Board trustee, a previous member of Clarendon Rotary Club, and a certified minor hockey coach. Currently, Bill is director of trail grooming with the Clarendon Nordic Ski Club and is an avid long-distance walker, skier, and iker. As a councillor, Bill sits on several committees. This includes public work, recreation and arts, and beautification committees. He is also the estimant member of the Eastern Newfoundland Waste Management Committee and chairperson of Arts Under the Stars. This will be Bill's third term as a councillor for Town of Clarendon, and he's very eager to get started working with the newly formed council. Ladies and gentlemen, Bill Bailey.
I, Bill Bailey, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipal area of Clarendon, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. Not yet. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign's contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
Signature like that, you should get up. Signature like that. Okay? Thank you. Third person is David Harris. David grew up in the nearby communities of Goobies, with a name like Harris, I think New Melbourne and Trinity Bay or New Chelsea and Anshaber is more appropriate. He attended Clarendon High and is lived in the Clarendon and Sholabber area for most of his adult life. David is married to his wife Chantelle, who is also from the Clarendon area, and they have one child, Grayson, seven years old. He has been employed with Eastern Elk since 2002 in a regional infrastructure management position based in Clarendon. David brings 16-plus years of engineering and project management experience. David has earned the International PMP Project Management Professional Certification from the Project Management Institute. He is also an engineering technologist and power engineer. He has worked in many industries, including oil and gas, mining, construction, and government. David is an active member in community activities such as serving on the Riverside School Council and has been actively involved with Scouts Canada as a leader for the Clarendon Beavers Group. He is an outdoor enthusiast and enjoys snowgilling, hockey, camping, iking, and skating. Ladies and gentlemen, David Harris.
I, David Harris, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipal area of Clarendon, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my private, affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in no matter before the council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
For candidate, Ebert Smith. Ebert Smith has been a lifelong resident of Clarendon, lives across the road just from me, across the area, is married to Clarendon Dope and has two children, Leah and Andrew. He will be starting his fourth term on council and has been employed with Service Canada as a business expertise advisor for 34 years. He has served on the Finance Committee of Council for 12 years, Emergency Preparations Committee for eight years, Economic Development Committee for eight years, and Beautification, Heritage, and Natural Environment Committee for the past four years. Ebert was a member of the 1994 Newfoundland-Levador Winter Games OS Committee, a member of the 1997 Canadian Midget Boys National Softball Championship OS Committee, president of Golf Newfoundland-Levador 2002, and Newfoundland Mission Staff Member for the 2007 Canada Winter Games in Whitehorse. He is the Eastern representative for Golf Newfoundland-Levador All of Fame Committee, Chair of Graduation and Results of 2014 Newfoundland-Levador Winter Games, and member of the 2015 Allen Cup OS Committee. His hobbies include hockey and golf. Ebert Smith.
I, Ebert Smith, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Clarendon, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in a matter before council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ebert Smith. Our fifth person is Paul Tilly. Paul Tilly was born and grew up in Bakans, Newfoundland. He attended Memorial University where he obtained undergraduate degrees in political science and in business, and a graduate degree in business administration. In the early 1990s, Paul moved to Clarendon for a teaching position with the Clarendon Campus of College of the North Lanning. Since that time, he has been involved with the college in developing and delivering innovative business-related programming throughout the college. Paul originally served on council between 2005 and 2009, where he was a member of the Torgat Award-winning Economic Development Committee that developed Clarendon's strategic plan and where he chaired the Beautification and Natural Environment Committee that helped Clarendon win tidy towns in 2009. Paul, together with and his wife Evelyn, continues to be active participants in this community. Paul has and continues to serve on several boards and committees. He is also of the community-oriented Our Town Clarendon Facebook and blog and a committee member of the Clarendon 2014 Winter Games OS Committee. Paul and Evelyn have two children, Anna and Harrison. Ladies and gentlemen, Paul Tilly.
I, Paul Tilly, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the town of Clarendon, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in any matter before council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ebert Smith. Our fifth person is Paul Tilly. Paul Tilly was born and grew up in Bakans, Newfoundland. He attended Memorial University where he obtained undergraduate degrees in political science and in business, and a graduate degree in business administration. In the early 1990s, Paul moved to Clarendon for a teaching position with the Clarendon Campus of College of the North Lanning. Since that time, he has been involved with the college in developing and delivering innovative business-related programming throughout the college. Paul originally served on council between 2005 and 2009, where he was a member of the Torgat Award-winning Economic Development Committee that developed Clarendon's strategic plan and where he chaired the Beautification and Natural Environment Committee that helped Clarendon win tidy towns in 2009. Paul, together with and his wife Evelyn, continues to be active participants in this community. Paul has and continues to serve on several boards and committees. He is also of the community-oriented Our Town Clarendon Facebook and blog and a committee member of the Clarendon 2014 Winter Games OS Committee. Paul and Evelyn have two children, Anna and Harrison. Ladies and gentlemen, Paul Tilly.
I, Paul Tilly, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the town of Clarendon, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in any matter before council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the act. So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ebert Smith. Our final candidate is, ladies and gentlemen, you'll have to forgive me if I tend to be a bit personal here. In 1965, when I came to Orwood High as a high school teacher, several pupils in that school caught my attention from the beginning. I could name them, but one of them was Fraser Russell, who had also been a newcomer to Clarendon at that time, because Fraser came to Clarendon just a couple of years before I did. He became a star pupil of mine, and I taught him all that he knows. Actually, I taught him French and physics at that time, and I have to say that as a young teacher, and Fraser being a very star pupil, we became teacher-pupil, very good friends. Fraser went on, of course, and achieved great marks in high school and went on to university. For many years after that, our paths continued to intersect. He started teaching in Clarendon, and I had moved, of course, to the Clarendon Elementary School. His wife Sherry became a member of ours later. Louise, my wife, was a primary teacher and taught our children in grade one.
to influence my conduct or affect my public duties in public matters. I will disclose any personal, direct or indirect monetary interest that I have in any matter before council and will not participate in the discussion or to vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement. I will, as required by Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the Act. So help me God.
Fraser was born in Winterbrook, Bonavista Bay, and moved to Clareville as a teenager in 1962. After graduating from Orwood High School, he attended Memorial University where he received a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education degree in 1972. He has also studied at the University of Ottawa and the University of Quebec. After a 30-year career in education, Fraser became a businessman and established several small businesses in Clareville which he continues to operate today. Fraser has been involved in many aspects of life in Clareville for the past 40 years. Chair of the 1994 Newfoundland Winter Games, Chair of the Dr. G. B. Cross Memorial Hospital Board, Chair of the Clareville Events Centre Building Committee and the Clareville Caribou's Hockey Club are just a few examples of his leadership positions. He has been a driving force behind the National Allen Cup Tournament being hosted by Clareville in April 2015. In recognition of his contributions, he has received a Leroy Miller Sport Biller Award twice, the Clareville Citizens of the Year Award, and the Melvin Jones Lions Club Award for dedicated humanitarian service to his community. Fraser has also served on council for 12 years, the past four years as Deputy Mayor. Fraser and his wife Sheri have three children, Dustin and Julia. Julia lives, who live in Clareville, and Leslie, who resides in Montreal and is present this evening with their only grandchild, 17-month-old Anna. Mayor Russell, as a symbol of your office right now, I send to you the chain of office of the town of Clareville. This chain of office is symbolic of the position that you will owe as mayor of this town. It demands respect at all times when you wear it, and of course, it's significant that this collar has come down through the town of Clareville for the last, I think it is maybe the last 20 years. I put this collar on you, sir? Ladies and gentlemen, Russell, congratulations.
Thank you, Fred. If I can call him that now? Fred, say it again, thank you very much. We're now going to hear some remarks from Mayor Russell, and I think Mayor Russell is going to give us an overview of his committees and what his direction is for the next four years. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Fraser Russell.
Thank you, Bob, MHA Ross Wiseman, invited guests, fellow council members, past council members, management and staff, family members, and of course, residents of Clareville. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending this evening's ceremony. As you are no doubt aware, this ceremony is a longstanding tradition and an important one in municipal government. It often signifies new beginnings. It is indeed a great honor and privilege to be your new mayor. I sincerely hope that I can leave a legacy as rich as my many predecessors. At this time, I want to thank outgoing Mayor Fred Vess, outgoing council members Keith Rodway, John Pickett, and Rod Nichol for their service to our town. We owe them a great deal of gratitude, and I would like for you to join me in showing them our appreciation. To the re-elected members of council and the newly-elected council members, I congratulate you on your election victory, and I am certain you will find this to be a rewarding and exciting term. More importantly, thank you for your willingness to get involved or to remain involved and help make Clareville realize its full potential. I look forward to working with each one of you over the next four years, but most of all, I look forward to what we can accomplish together as none of us acting alone can achieve success. Naturally, during the election, the business of council has been dormant for the past number of weeks. Beginning tomorrow, all normal council functions will resume with an air of excitement and great anticipation. In that regard, I am delighted to announce the following committee structure and membership. Beginning with finance administration, it will be chaired by councillor Smith with members councillor Tilly and councillor Avery. The Beautification and Environment Committee will no longer continue to exist. Instead, we will merge that with the new Department of Public Works and Planning which will be chaired by councillor Bill Bailey with members councillor Harris and councillor Smith. Our Economic Development Committee has changed somewhat, and our new title will be Community Development and Communications. We've added communications as a new aspect because this needed to be addressed. Our residents said to us that we need to better communicate with them and certainly now with some added focus on this. And this committee will be chaired by councillor Tilly with members councillor Avery and councillor Jill Monk. And finally, the Arts and Recreation Committee of Council will consist of chairperson Harris and of course councillor Bailey, who has been on this committee before, and councillor Jill Monk as well. In concluding, our residents have placed a great deal of trust and confidence in us, and we will not let them down. Thank you very much.
That just about concludes our swearing-in ceremony. It's funny that before this event started tonight, Mayor Russell, I had not called him Mayor Russell now. I used to know Fraser, but now I'm going to call him Mayor Russell. So the only thing he was worried about is if his grandchild was going to make any noise during the ceremony. The only time I heard the child making noise is when Fraser was just speaking. I don't know if that's one of your opponents or one of your cheerleaders, but you did a great job there. There is a meet-and-greet directly after this. We have some refreshments out in the lobby. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank all my staff who are here for all the assistance that they've given me and previous council over the last four years. You guys did a great job, and I really want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. I want to say welcome to all the new councillors. I'm looking forward to working with you and sharing your vision and achieving your goals over the next four years. Very soon, you'll realize that you'll come to know the staff by the first-name basis and become very friendly and comfortable with them. They'll do whatever they can to help you out. We're going to close off with the O-Canada and get Jolene up again. Do a single "O-Canada" for the whole crowd.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons commit. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.